All righty. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Thursday. This is an odd night for a meeting. Thursday, September 10th, 2015. We have all members of council present. If everybody can rise and with the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Group, why don't you lead us? Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. Excuse me. How about our new officers? Why don't you guys?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief. How are you tonight?
Very well.
Chief, is everybody okay in that accident yesterday out on 434?
Yes, fortunately. Injuries were fairly minor in nature.
I don't think the tree survived.
No, the tree's gone. One less tree.
That's okay.
It'll get taken care of.
We can replace the tree.
We were very busy yesterday, extremely busy. Counsel, tonight, I don't have the 9/11 memorial with us. We've already delivered at Tovito High School for tomorrow's championship football game. They asked to have that as part of the feature, as part of tomorrow night's event, is a memorial dedication to September 11th. And as always, I share a few statistics. We're 14 years since that tragic event. Over 70 different nationalities represent the victims. 2,977 total victims of that. Of course, we know 343 of New York City firefighters, 37 Port Authority police officers, 23 New York police officers, 80 EMS personnel. 184 of the 2977 was from the Pentagon and 40, of course, from Shanksville, Pennsylvania. So we did receive a proclamation from the governor today to lower our flag, so we'll be taking care of that tomorrow as well for sunrise to sunset. So tonight, we dedicate this in memory of the victims and their families and friends and coworkers. But if you'd like to join me in prayer, please do so this time. Father God, we're remembered to the events of September 11th, 2001, and, Lord, we pray for the comfort of the families, the friends, the coworkers, and our nation. And, Lord, we're just blessed in this country beyond means. We pray for our military members that have taken the charge after this tragic event, our law enforcement, Homeland Security that secure us each and every day, our fire rescue, all our government workers, elected leaders, and our country as a whole. We pray that you keep a hedge of protection around this and continue to bless this nation. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. First item of business tonight is ceremonial item, and it's our new officer introductions. Chief Trednow, this is your item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I would like to introduce our new officers. They were sworn in a couple of weeks ago. It's the first chance we've had to bring them in front of council. I'm going to invite them up, and they're going to introduce themselves and just tell a little bit about themselves to the audience and to council.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good.
Ed Dale, currently just got started here. Served six years prior to this in the U.S. Army. Father of two, married, graduated Valencia Police Academy, just finished my two-year AA at Valencia, continuing my education online, and I'm just excited to be here and looking forward to the journey.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Good evening. My name's Jessica Matias, 29. Worked previously at the State Attorney's Office in Seminole County for eight years. Graduated from UCF with a bachelor's in criminal justice and two undergrad certificates in criminal profiling and behavioral forensics. I'm also a master's student there as well. Just started here, and I'm looking forward to advance.
So it sounds like you're our CSI.
[laughing].
Good evening. My name's Asher Moncada. I'm married, I'm 27, military spouse. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice as well, graduated with honors. I have hopes into getting into my masters once I get into my new role. I am also excited and blessed to be here, so thank you for having me.
Okay. Guys, thank you.
I'd just like to say that these three officers were, we had probably about 60 people that applied for the last positions through the testing and interviews. These three ones were hires. We have great hopes for them joining our family here and becoming great officers for the city of Oviedo.
Chief, how many sworn officers do you have now?
We are right now at 66, and we are fully staffed.
All right, and I think there might be two more in the upcoming budget?
That's a possibility if the council...
I said "might."
If the council grants that request.
Oh, great, Chief. Well, we appreciate everything that you do, guys. As we said when you were getting your badges, welcome to the Oviedo family. Please be safe out there. You know, we appreciate that you protect us. These are a lot of your citizens who are sitting behind you right now, and I know they appreciate everything that you do as well. So thank you. Thank you, Chief.
It's Mayor, thank you.
Moving along to the next item on our agenda, which is the budget resolution, I believe. Resolution number 3049-15 and 3050-15. This is the first public hearing to adopt the fiscal year 2015-16 tentative millage rates and tentative budget. Mr. Cobb, do you have any brief introduction before I go into the order of business?
Yes, Mayor. On July 22nd, the city council conducted a special meeting and set the tentative millage rate at 5.0434 mills. The budget that is proposed tonight is balanced to that millage rate. There is also a general obligation bond millage of 0.2386, which is a decrease from FY 14-15. We have a total millage rate of 5.2820. The total FY 15-16 budget is $60,112,525 net of interfund transfers. There is something that we will need to get your consensus on tonight in order preparing for the September 21st second public hearing. We did receive a request from our state lobbyist to increase their allocation by $10,000. Currently in the budget is an allocation of $40,000 for next year. They requested 10 extra to, for a total of $50,000, we would request your consensus tonight whether to fund the additional 10,000. And tonight, council, I would also like to recognize the budget team. I went through and introduced you to them individually at our various meetings over the summer, but I do want to recognize their hard work in putting together this budget. They deserve the credit for this and how much I appreciate them. But it's recommended tonight that the city council read these resolutions by title only, stating the tentative millage rate of 5.0434 mills and the general obligation bond millage rate of .2386 mills for a combined 5.2820 mills, conduct a public hearing, and then schedule our second public hearing for Monday, September 21st, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Do you want that consensus up front or after we go through the public hearing?
Whenever you, just through the process tonight, we would need the consensus.
Well, council, so we don't forget, is there consensus on the first item asked?
Yes.
Yep, there you go.
Thank you.
All righty, so this is a public hearing, and so I will open the public hearing at this time for the 2015-2016 budget. I will state, as Mr. Cobb already did, that the tentative millage rate of 5.0434 mills is a millage increase of 4.31% compared to the rollback tax rate of 4.8349 mills. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on this item? Hearing none, I will close the public comment portion, and I'll have the city attorney read the tentative millage rate levy resolution number 3049-15. Mr. Group?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A resolution establishing the millage rates to be levied for fiscal year 2015-2016 by City of Oviedo City Government, adopting the millage rates for the 2015-2016 fiscal year for the City of Oviedo at the overall rate of 5.2820 mills with 5.0434 mills for the city's operations and 0.2386 mills for the payment on the 2003 general obligation bond issue, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, savings provision, conflicts, severability, and an effective date. And that's the resolution by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 349-15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Councilman Schenck?
I'd just like to echo thanks to the budget team and everybody who put in a lot of hard work.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm good.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilman Henkin?
Thank you, staff. Great job.
All righty. All those in favor of the motion on the table to adopt resolution 3049-15 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just like to publicly announce once again that the tentative, because there will be another hearing, operating millage rate is set at 5.0434 mills, which is 4.31% higher than the rollback millage rate of 4.8349 mills, and combined with the general obligation bond issue of 0.2386 mills, the overall millage rate is 5.2820 mills. And we have to do this all over again in two weeks. Mr. Group, can you please read the budget resolution, number 3050-15?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A resolution adopting the City of Oviedo's annual operating budget for the 2015-2016 fiscal year beginning October 1, 2015, and ending September 30, 2016, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, conflicts, severability, and an effective date. And that's the resolution by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 3050-15.
So moved.
Motion second. Councilman Schenck, anything?
No, sir.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilman Henkin? Deputy Mayor?
Good job, staff.
All righty. Hearing none, I will close this public hearing, and I'm going to move to schedule a second public hearing for Monday, September 21st, 2015, Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard at 6:30 p.m. And I actually forgot to call the question. All in favor of the motion to adopt resolution 3050-15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So once again, I'll move to schedule a second public hearing for Monday, September 21st, 2015, here at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. That closes the budget hearing. We're going to move on to the approval of the minutes from August 17th, our regular session, and August 20th, a work session. What is the pleasure of council?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you.
Motion is second, any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the public comment portion of our meeting right now. Now, I do have some written requests, but I think these are on an item that will be coming up before us in a moment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on any item not on the agenda this evening? No? Hearing none, I will close the public comment portion and move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight is made up of items five through eight. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Henkin?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in multiple seconds. I will let the clerk figure out who got in first there.
I think it was you.
We'll give it to Cindy. All righty. We have motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along to item number nine. Let me just catch up to us here. Item number nine is ordinance number 1623. This was an item that was continued from sometime in July, I believe it was. Mr. Cobb, turn it over to you for... Nope, I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney to read by title only, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending the official zoning map to change the zoning district of approximately 11.48 acres located on the east side of South Lake Jessup Avenue, south side of Clark Street, and north side of Hillcrest Street from residential R1 to Plan Unit Development PUD, providing for legislative findings and intent, implementing actions, noncodification, severability, conflicts, and an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a continuance of your public hearing from Monday, July 6th, 2015. The city council asked the applicant to go back and to take another look at their proposal and ask for certain revisions. The main issue that the city council asked the applicant to look at was to become more consistent with the R1 zoning district. The applicant has resubmitted the plans and the development agreement, and the differences of the revisions that are proposed from the original request have been outlined in your memorandum. The, in the staff's opinion, the applicant has become more consistent with the R1 zoning district regulations. There has been a reduction in the number of single-family residential lots from 34 to 30. The staff's recommendation is the same as it was on July 6th. The staff recommends approval. It is recommended that the city council read the ordinance by title, which you did, conduct the public hearing, and adopt ordinance number 1623.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present?
My name is David Axel. Axel Real Estate, 1757 West Broadway, Suite 1 in Oviedo, here representing the underlying property owners and speaking for the applicant also. I have one handout to share with you, and then I'll have a brief presentation, and then we can move on. I'll get to what I just gave you in just one second. First of all, I want to say I appreciate the council giving us the opportunity to take another look at this plan. We very much appreciate the efforts of your staff in reviewing our submittals and helping us make final revisions, put this in shape for tonight's hearing and approval. And we do appreciate the public process and the participation of all the neighbors in the information meeting we had and at the last hearing. We have worked real hard, the design team and the property owner, to try and alleviate as best we could all the concerns of the neighbors while still maintaining a cost-effective, feasible, and marketable project. And we feel we've done that. What I've handed you for reference, because we had a similar handout at the last hearing, is just a list of the actual lot sizes on the conceptual development plan and attached to it for convenience, is just a drawing showing where those lots are and what those lot numbers are. And that's just for a basis of comparison for your benefit. There were a number of errors I'd like to point out in the developers' agreement and one in the staff report, and I'm just going to touch on those real quick. Attachment 1, which is the staff report on page 20, is the Evans Square PUD zoning map amendment adjacent lot sizes, and there was a minor error in that the lot sizes and width shown on that drawing refer to what we submitted for the July 6th hearing. The 7,475 square foot minimum lot size should be 9,570, and the minimum lot width that says 65 should be 70 feet. The developers' agreement on page 6, item 5A, we missed one of the 34s, so the 34 in that item should be 30 lots. And for clarification, on page 8, item 9B, a question had arisen about street lighting, and in the first sentence where it says "no lighting will be required," it's intended to say there are no new lighting, so existing lights will remain. And now, real quickly, I'd just like to touch on the major revisions to the plan, and this is not everything we did, but it's kind of the highlights, and these things really relate to the concerns we heard. First, the total number of lots was reduced from 35 to 31, of which 30 are the residential lots, so there was a reduction of four. On this plan, all of the lots exceed 8,500 square feet. The minimum lot depth was increased from 115 to 125 feet. We actually only have four that are that depth, that are quite a bit wider, that are in the center of the Loop Road. Most of the lots range from 137 to 153 feet in depth. The minimum lot width increased from 65 feet to 70 feet, and if you look at the plan, many lots are quite a bit wider than that. There was a criteria we added that's on the plan, that the residential homes will have a minimum spacing of 20 feet. We did increase front setbacks from 5 feet to 20 feet along South Lake Jessup Avenue and Hillcrest Street, and from 5 feet to 15 feet on all other roads. On this plan, all of the lots are front-load with rear garages and long driveways, and as a result of that, the parking capacity on the typical lot has increased from four cars to six. Now, that's six on the 125-foot-deep lots using just the garage, the turnaround area, and the driveway. Folks certainly, if they want, can add more, and there would be, one more car could fit on the deeper lots, and this is with 10-by-20 spaces with six feet between cars, so quite a convenient layout. We added a tree-protection tract along the frontage of South Lake Jessup, south of the project entrance. Those lots previously, I mean, those trees previously had been on lots, so we've set aside open space with those trees on it, so that's permanent protection and not privately-owned. That'll be association-controlled. And we added a 5-foot landscape easement along Hillcrest, the specific design of which will be provided in a subsequent process, the preliminary subdivision plan and final engineering. So I'll just say at this point, we feel we've complied with the comp plan and the code. I think all that was put into evidence at the last hearing, so I won't repeat it all. We're here and available for questions now, or if anything comes up later, in discussion, and we would respectfully like to have the right to rebut any evidence to the contrary subsequently. So if there's no questions at this time, that's our presentation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Axel. Thank you. All righty, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. I do have a few written requests and a couple of requests for everybody. We spent three hours on this last time. We understand where everybody is. We heard all of your comments the last time. I will never stop anybody from making a public comment. I would ask, though, that we try not to repeat what we did a month or two ago and really keep it to the plan that they just presented and the fact that I think they really did listen. So I'm going to go through the written requests first, and then I'll open it up. First, I'm just doing these in the order that they came in, folks. The first written request is from Stephen McKinney-Stuck.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm Stephen McKinney-Stuck, a 25-year resident of the City of Oviedo, living at 652 Forest Cove, which is about a quarter of a mile south and west of the Evans Square project. As I did last time, I am speaking on behalf of the recommendation, urging you to approve it as amended evidently, taking, in my view, sort of a longer downstream view of looking at the western gateway and the Cross Seminole Trail spur as a terrific opportunity to begin moving east towards downtown Oviedo Plaza, I think it's currently called, with an eye, if council and the community has, as a goal to create a winter garden-like effect, that Cross Seminole Trail, which runs immediately north of the property in question, is a terrific opportunity to introduce cyclists, pedestrians, runners to this part of our community. This enhancement with the Evans Square is a terrific way to accommodate such a longer-term vision for downtown Oviedo and the Oviedo Plaza. This would be an excellent opportunity to introduce a aesthetically interesting and a tie-in to the Cross Seminole Trail Evans Project and what we all hope for, I assume, is a terrific improvement to downtown Oviedo. With this project as amended, I think that creates that chance, and I would urge your support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next written request I have is from Paul Var... I can't read the rest of it there, Paul, I'm sorry. I won't even murder it on you. But just name and address for the record, and then I'll know it forever.
So my name is Paul Verholic. I'm at 490 Vercliff Court. I'm directly across from the Evans Square project. I came away from the last city council meeting where this topic was discussed excited and encouraged. Our government process had worked. Our voices had been heard, and our neighborhood's character would be preserved. After reviewing the updated plans for this development, my enthusiasm has waned. I will not deny that the developers have moved closer to the R1 zoning requirements, but I fear they haven't gone far enough. In the last meeting, I think it was Councilman Britton, and forgive me if this is incorrect, who held up a document with potential plans for this development under R1 zoning and asked the developers, "Please don't do this." My question is, how is the proposed development substantively different from that sketch? And if it isn't substantively different, then why do we require a zoning change? Instead of 34 houses, we have 30 houses. This is an underwhelming modification. Why is a zoning change required for this development? That's my question. And finally, I think it was Councilman Henkin that stated that in the last meeting, that your chief's concern was first for the residents who are already here, and then for those who wish to come to our fine city. So please consider the impact that this development will have on our beautiful neighborhood as you deliberate on this issue. And thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next written request is from Desta Horner.
Mr. Mayor and council, my name is Desta Horner. I live at 652 Forest Cove in Oviedo, and I have looked at the modifications to the plan. I was originally in favor of the plan as it was originally proposed, and am in favor of the plan even more so since it has been modified. Under the new plan, many of the safety concerns that were raised have been spoken to and been addressed, the distances between houses, the size of the lots. Much of the request and concerns and opposition has been met. I am particularly interested in seeing this property built in because what it would bring to the community. If you're offering homes of $500,000 to $800,000 in that neighborhood, it will raise the level of value, property value, in the area. It also will raise the standard for Oviedo in terms of adding a whole level of sophistication in terms of the style of homes being offered. I've known Arthur Evans for many, many years, Claire Evans, the Evans family, the Wheeler family, the wonderful house that is located already on the property that is planned to be preserved, and I cannot but feel that this property and this development will be of the finest quality in order to keep in scope and idea similar to the Evans-Wheeler house that is currently on that property. I think this would be an additional... I think this would be an additional enhancement to the city of Oviedo as we move forward, while still maintaining our sense of being a small, and cozy, and friendly, and modern, and accepting community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the end of the written request I have. Is there anybody in the audience who’d like to address council? And then I’ll go over to you, ma’am.
Thank you. Rob Branchow, 455 Madison Lane, Oviedo. I’ll make this really short. I want to thank the city council. I want to thank staff, and I want to thank the developer for listening and for making many of the changes that we spoke to. And while there are always other things, some other details, that we would like if we had the pen in our hand, I really do acknowledge that they’ve made many significant changes and dealt with many of the major concerns, I know, at least I had, for the project. And for that, I just wanted to come up and acknowledge that and say thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Francis Cruz, 145 Hillcrest. I’ve been a resident of Oviedo for twenty-eight years. I would also like to thank the city council, the staff, and the Evans group for all of the changes they’ve made. I appreciate it very, very much. But someone said at the last council meeting, and I can’t remember who it was, but “Be careful what you wish for,” and they were correct. As I see it, and I’m not an architect or anything, but it looks like more homes have been put on Hillcrest. I can only hope that the traffic on the already substandard streets, I recently moved my dining room from the back of the house to the front of the house, and all of a sudden, I see all of this traffic, and all of these walkers. And I can’t imagine what’s going to happen with this, any more homes. Tonight, coming here, cars were trying to come both ways on Hillcrest, and there was a man with his dog walking. Both cars had to stop in order for him to care of his dog. I just hope that traffic, safety, will be a real concern of everyone. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma’am. Thank you. Anybody else like to address council?
My name is Dan Beistel, and I’m at 460 Madison Lane. We’ve lived there for twelve or thirteen years, been a resident of Oviedo for over sixty years. I do want to thank all of the council members, the staff, the developers, the Evanses. I think you folks have really done a fine job of trying to alleviate the concerns that the citizens have. It’s not perfect, but then again, you’ve done a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who’d like to address council?
I’m Vicki Clontz. I live at 146 Hillcrest Street. I was born here, so I’ve lived here all my life, fifty-five years. I’ve moved away and come back several times. So anyway, yeah, I like the changes. They’re heading in the right direction. I have always kind of been a little concerned about the azalea units on here in Baldwin Park. I know there are rental units above the garage, and the laws in Baldwin Park says that you can live in your azalea unit and rent your house, or you can live in your house, rent your azalea unit, or you can live elsewhere and rent both. Now, I’m wondering if these mother-in-law suites are going to become that. If so, we’re not talking, they’re one electric. So the azalea suites in Baldwin Park are electric, is paid for. But we are no longer talking, if that’s going to be the case, we’re no longer talking about a single-family unit. That’s a different use. But in Baldwin Park, those are considered single-family homes with those. And I think the minimum in there is the same thing here, the minimum of one thousand square feet. And that brings a whole different traffic concern. But anyway, things are heading in the right direction. Appreciate everyone’s time and everyone’s cooperation on that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? No, unfortunately. You have to come on up. I’m sorry. The clerk has to catch it for the record. It’s her rule, not mine. Well, actually, we’ll blame it on the lawyer, because if I would’ve said yes, he would’ve chimed in. She would’ve gotten nervous, more nervous than you are.
Hi, I’m Crystal Porter. I live at 460 Veracliff Court in Oviedo. My question is, if the developer comes back and say there’s like some sort of deviation they need, will we be notified? Will there be another hearing? What would be the process?
We’ll get that answered for you. See, that wasn’t so bad. We don’t bite. Is there anybody else? All righty. Seeing that, I’m going to close public comments and move on to the applicant. Do you want to answer any of these? There was a deviation process I’ll get from staff, but the auxiliary units, and why are these changes necessary?
Mr. Mayor, I’d certainly be happy to answer any specific questions of council if you have them. Do you want me to respond to those two items?
Personally, I’d just like to hear about the auxiliary units.
Auxiliary units are actually encouraged by your comprehensive plan. Came about, I believe, through Laura Cap’s efforts to have Oviedo be a community for a lifetime. And I can tell you, as a dad with kids in their twenties, sometimes they bounce back. I’ve got a mother-in-law who’s in her mid-eighties and doesn’t want to move into a home. It suits that kind of purpose. I understand people are concerned about rentals and so forth, but all we did was, quite frankly, follow what the comprehensive plan says the city must encourage and provide for in all zoning districts. So it’s not peculiar to this project. And I’m sorry, the other question?
The other question that... Yeah, I’ll ask staff the other one. Anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Axel?
Well, going back to the auxiliary units, are the homes going to have single meters?
I have no idea. You know, that question had never been raised before.
We’ll ask staff. Any other questions for Mr. Axel?
I have a question for Brian, Mr. Cobb.
Okay, we’ll get to that in a moment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. If we have any other questions, we reserve the right to call you back. Mr. Cobb, can we have Dr. Carrera maybe for a moment?
Good evening.
How are you?
Doing fine, you?
Councilman Britton asked about one meter or two meters. What does the code say, if anything?
We don’t have anything established yet. For us, it’s a single-family unit. So technically, it should be one meter. But we haven’t had that established in the code yet.
But it’s considered a single-family unit?
It’s considered a single-family.
So you would go under the premise of one meter?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody asked, “Why are these changes necessary?” I know that you touched on it the last time. A lot of it was because of the house.
Because of the mixed use.
Right, of the mixed use with the house. Could you just explain that once again for everyone?
Yes. The reason why we need to have a PUD is because of the mixed use. That area, the only way that we could address, we could accommodate another use other than a residential use would be through a PUD. All the other deviations they could request as a deviation to the PSP.
Another question that was asked was the deviation process. I mean, we know what it is, but could you explain to the public how the public hearings happen with deviation processes?
The next step for this project would be a PSP. A PSP is approved by city council. So at that stage, whatever deviation that they would request, it would come to city council. Anything after that would be either, up to twenty percent would be staff-level, but twenty percent is either approved by myself or by the city manager. Above twenty percent is approved by city council.
Correct. So a twenty percent deviation, just let’s put that to perspective for everybody. If they wanted to change a setback from, or a lot with, let’s just say, from eighty feet to seventy-eight feet, that’s more than twenty percent. That’s got to come to city council.
Yes, and that would be addressed in the PSP. And PSP is approved by city council.
I was just using a general, generally. Any other questions?
And that’s a preliminary subdivision plan.
It’s a preliminary subdivision plan. PSP is not a public hearing process, but it’s announced, and everybody can follow. And our process is very transparent. I mean, if people are interested in knowing what we are doing, I mean, it’s always easy to follow what we are doing and check with us. But also check the agenda, that everything that we take to city council is public, advertised in our website, so people can check when the PSP is coming to city council.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Dr. Carrera? Councilman, thank you. Deputy Mayor, you asked to have the floor earlier. The floor is yours.
I did. Well, actually, Teresa just answered what I was going to ask Brian, but so...
All righty. Well, terrific.
I’ll wait for discussion.
Mr. Axel, can I ask you a question, please? The plan that you submitted tonight, it’s your intention that that’s basically going to be your preliminary subdivision plan?
I believe that’s the case. Yes.
This one that you handed us?
That is a copy of sheet C4 of the plans that are part of what you’re approving tonight. So the intention, subject to any minor deviations due to final engineering issues that come up, or staff comments that come up, that is the intent, that that is the plan, yes.
That’s what I expected, or your answer would be. I just wanted you to say it so the public would hear it. Thank you. Any...
I do have one question.
Any other questions?
Yes. Mr. Axel, in the packet here on attachment six, the plan looks like it’s the, like the old plan. It’s not this one.
That was, the staff included that as a reference. That’s not the plan we’re proposing.
All right, okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes. Deputy Mayor, we provided the plan from July sixth meeting as an attachment to your memorandum. The plan that you’re being asked to approve is attached to your, is an exhibit to your resolution.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Axel? Thank you, sir. All righty. What is the pleasure of council on ordinance number 1623?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1623.
Second. Motion second. Councilman Schenk, you have the floor.
Mr. Cobb, I’m just going to touch rentals again for a minute. We don’t encourage rental, we not discourage rentals, I hate to say that. How many stoves, et cetera, are allowed in houses and single-family homes to, things like that? I don’t want to say discourages rentals, because it’s okay to have someone rent a portion of your house, but having a whole separate living and basically converting a single to a multiple-family home kind of thing.
I’m not an expert in the building code, but that’s where the primary regulations lie. A single-family residential unit has living quarters, it has sleeping quarters, it has bathrooms, and it has a kitchen. And normally, what the building officials will tell you is that the kitchen can, to be able to say it’s single, is that you have one kitchen with one stove, you know, with a hooded system, okay? If you have your mother-in-law suite, you could still have a kitchen, but you wouldn’t have all of the components that go into the kitchen that would say that it is a separate dwelling unit. And so that’s really, we rely a lot on the building code for that. Generally, what you’ll have with these mother-in-law suites, you’ll have, well, they’ll have a refrigerator, they’ll probably have a microwave, you know, and then cabinets and sink, things like that. But it’s not what you would, what the building code would term a full-working kitchen.
That’s it right now. You’re good? Councilman Britton?
Just a few things. One, I want to set the record straight. I’m not sure I was the gentleman that showed the sketch. I think that was you, wasn’t it, Mr. Mayor?
It was.
I was the “be careful what you wish for” guy. So I’ll take credit for that. But again, I think this is a good effort on the developer. I think it was a very cooperative effort, and I’m glad it’s turning out this way. I don’t think it’s perfect. I don’t think everyone’s going to be happy with it. But I do think everyone put their best effort in on this, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the folks that came and thanked us for the efforts we put in, because we’ve all lost quite a bit of sleep over this project. So with that, I think I’ll end my comments.
Thank you, Councilman Britton. Councilman Henkin, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. You know, these are always hard on the residents and hard on the city council and the staff, because we, you know, I think you all saw at the last meeting, we had almost a four-hour meeting, because we wanted to hear everybody speak, and, you know, just not sitting up here and just being a citizen. I mean, I did the same thing before I was elected. When I had things that came in my area or other areas where I could help, I certainly would. And what I’ve learned is, you know, you never get everything. But honestly, you know, I think when this first came out, everybody said, “Got to get those eighty-five-hundred-square-foot lots.” You know, what Mr. Axel handed us tonight, you know, I think the smallest lot here is ninety-eight forty-four. So, you know, I think Councilman Britton just hit it. It’s not perfect, but it’s very close to it. And, you know, if this never came to us, they could have built something that I don’t think would have been as nice. So something was coming there anyway. You know, I think a lot of us in our head wished that, you know, the trees were still producing oranges, and it stayed that way. I mean, that’s what we’re all going to miss. But, you know, times are what they are. I’m very happy that it’s the Evans family that’s behind this, because we all knew Mrs. Evans. She was a very nice lady, and our house is going to stay there. So change is hard, but one thing I can tell you, working with these folks for ten years, that they’re going to not leave anything unturned, and they’re going to make it as nice as possible. Traffic issues, I can assure you, the chief and his fine folks will make sure that that runs smooth. And if anything comes up along the way, we’re going to be here for you, just like we were. So, you know, it took a little time, but I think we got to the point where we made it as best we could. And thankfully, we have a good person like Mr. Evans that sat with you guys and Mr. Axel and his team to try to get this as best we could. So is it perfect? No, but I think we’re close. So that’s all I have to say.
Great. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Well, I agree with a few comments that were made there. This was a very, very difficult decision, something that I have lost sleep over, because I take it very seriously. I have to think of the people who live in Oviedo and what’s best for our community while looking at what a property owner wants to do and his rights. I have to thank them for what they did, changing what they did. They did increase all the lot sizes, so they are all R1 standard. They moved the properties back, so you have that twenty-foot setback. So they really did work very hard, and I appreciate that. The cars in the driveway now, they can park six instead of three, I think it was before, on the other, in the other plan. But I have to say, there is a part of the plan that makes me very uncomfortable, and that is the five homes on Hillcrest. If you look at, if you walked on Hillcrest from South Lake Jessup to the end of where that last house, number one, is going to be, there are two houses across the street. So you have two houses over here and five houses there. To me, that really is quite a difference. Then you have one single-family home right here in the corner of lot number one... Then you have one single-family home right here in the corner of Lot Number One, and she is now going to have two houses on her property line, on her east property line, and four, three to four houses that line up on the back of her property line. To me, that's just a big jump. Instead of going from single fam, one house, and you might have another house behind you, another house beside you, she's going from two to three in the back. So, but it's mainly the Hillcrest, the five homes on Hillcrest, that I'm really struggling with, because Hillcrest is not going to be widened. I've talked to Mr. Wyatt, and there's, the Wyatt Road cannot be widened. It can be improved, of course, and they can improve the, the surface of it and the, like the side of it, but it's not going to be widened. So you're having five more driveways coming out on Hillcrest, which can pose a traffic problem. I know if you drive down Hillcrest, which is a very small road, you do have a lot of traffic coming back and forth, trying to get around. You get a truck coming down, you, he almost hits you if you're just driving a regular car. Then my other, my only other complaint is the sidewalk along South Lake Jessup, and I think that maybe that's something that can be easily remedied, is when you start at South Lake Jessup and you start walking down, you have the street, you have the curb, you have a grassy area, and then you have the sidewalk. So if you're walking on the sidewalk, you have a few feet before the street, because South Lake Jessup is only two lanes also, so that's a small street. But as you walk down, you lose that grass buffer, and the sidewalk ends up being right along the street with the curb. And that just goes down a little bit past Mrs. Evans' house to the other house, and then the grass starts again, so you have a little bit of a buffer there. And so I was wondering, that's something I do believe that can be fixed during the project. I even talked to one of these gentlemen about it, and he felt that it was something that could be fixed, to make it safer on South Lake Jessup, since we are going to have more people. And we do have kids that walk up and down that street all the time, going to Head Start, going to Lawton Elementary, going to Friendship Park. So it gets a lot of traffic with children and parents when they're strollers, bicycle So then my third concern was the rent, but, you know, if somebody buys a house and they rent the back area out to, you know, kids or something like that. So I think that's something we can address and kind of monitor and help that out, so that it's used for what it's supposed to be used for. So with my concerns, I don't know if Mr. Axel has any response to that, or if he's even listening to me.
I'm listening.
Thank you.
Would you like?
I would like a response to those five homes.
Well, I appreciate your concern, Deputy Mayor. I don't believe there's anything we could do there. I will point out, directly across the street, while you have the sides of two homes facing that same area, you have two private lanes that serve 11 houses. So yes, it was our initial goal not to have any driveways on the exterior, and that didn't work out, so this is almost in the be careful what you wish for category, but we tried real hard to do the best we can here. I don't think the difference of one house is really going to harm the neighborhood. And as you did point out, Hillcrest can't necessarily be widened, and whether it needs to be improved or not is a matter of PSP and final engineering, as determined by your staff, and we'll see. So it's not the intent to make anything unsafe, and I certainly hope we don't. You did reference the sidewalk.
I did, on South Lake Jessup.
We have previously mentioned that the developer is willing during construction to straighten that jog, and I will make that commitment on the record tonight, that during the PSP or final engineering, whenever it's appropriate, it is a city sidewalk and city right-of-way. Nevertheless, we understand that issue and wish to have the best possible project there, and will make that commitment. Did that cover everything?
It does.
Okay.
I, I, you said that one lot wouldn't make a difference? One lot? If you lost one lot on that, on Hillcrest, that would make a huge difference. It really would. It would make those other homes wider, a little bit more open.
I'm saying the impact, honestly, I don't think is that different. As I pointed out, there's 11 homes in that same distance that access Hillcrest across the street.
Oh, man.
And this is five. So I appreciate and understand your concern.
But we do have a problem with traffic already there, so it will add to it, the five homes. So it will add to it.
I can't say another house doesn't add traffic.
Yep.
Anything else?
I had, see, and this, this was another concern of mine. I had asked in an email about a, some type of buffer between lots 1, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Not a wall, not a fence, nothing like that, just maybe a hedge or something. And the response was that, yes, you could do it, but it would have to be on someone else's property, and that concerns me. Are these homes going to be right on the property line?
No, and, and I don't mind explaining that answer.
Okay.
First off, and it might be a little hard to tell, but if you looked at Sheet C4 of the plan and the dimensions, lots 10, 11, 12, and 13, which abut the rear of the property you're seeking the buffer for. Those lots are 81, 81, 82, and 85 feet wide. I'm sorry. I misread there. 80, 81, 81, and 82. So those lots today exceed the R1 standard, for which there is no required buffer. Furthermore, on the property directly adjacent, there are structures very close to the line that are north of the primary residence.
Yes.
That block the view between the residence and these properties. So it was our feeling that the, a buffer imposition there wasn't really a code-based requirement. I think the response had been if that owner would like a buffer, that the developer would be happy to discuss matters with her and assist in planning a buffer. Simple as that.
Okay. I don't have any more questions for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Motioner and seconder agree on the sidewalk issue that the developer said he'll be taking care of on lots, I'm assuming that's 28, 29, and 30? Motioner? Yeah? All righty, so that gets added into the motion, that they'll take care of that. Any other questions from council?
I don't know.
Go ahead.
I have one more question. The lots next to the main house, Lot 30 and 27, it is my understanding that you are not going to build on those, those two lots. Is that still true?
Those lots are not being sold as part of this transaction, and it is the intention of the underlying property owner to, at a future time, gift those to the Chamberlain Foundation for use with the house, and we've got criteria in the developer's agreement to cover that. There's a garden existing there now, and it's hard to say what that'll be in the forever future, but really, it's intended to be event overflow parking, if there is such a need, but really gardens, because the house itself has, and Arthur might argue with this characterization, I guess I'd call it a coffee room or a, or kind of a reception room that looks out over that garden. And we wanted to create that sense of, of space as part of the gift of, of Mrs. Evans and her intentions.
I think that's it.
Okay. All righty. All righty, so we have a motion and a second to adopt. Are there any other questions? No? Well, I'll just reiterate what every member of council has said this evening. We do appreciate everyone's input at the last meeting. I think that the developer has done the best they can to meet all of the issues that were raised, and, you know, I'd like to also thank those who came up and recognized those efforts, because it's never easy when we sit up here, and we have to balance, as Deputy Mayor said, the wishes of the existing residents against the rights of a property owner. So it becomes a very delicate balance, and in this situation, I think the outcome, while maybe not what everybody wanted on either side, because, folks, this isn't exactly what they wanted either. They wanted what they brought us the last time. I think really this project will fit in nicely with the community, so. With that being said, we have the motion on the table. The motion was amended to include the developer's comment to fix the sidewalk out in front of, again, I'll just say, I think it's Lot 28, 29, 30, but small sidewalk section along Lake Jessup, that Deputy Mayor referenced.
Mr. Mayor, it's actually Lot 31 and 30.
I'm sorry? 31 and 30?
The sidewalk, yeah, it's 30, it's at the existing house, 30, 31, 30, and it might go down to 29, I'm not sure how far that goes down.
Wherever it is along the way. You gentlemen know where it is, right? All righty, great. All those in favor of the motion with the changes put onto it to adopt Ordinance number 1623, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Moving on. Why don't we take a quick break? We'll let everybody clear out. Five minutes. Okay, now that we didn't rush through the important one, we can say it. There's a big football game on at 8:30 that we all have to make. Opening of the season, Steelers and the Pats. Go Steelers!
Who cares?
Who cares? All my New England friends will be emailing me right now. Anyway, we're up to item number 10, I believe it is. Yep. Ordinance number 1625, Amendments to the Land Development Code, Article 6, Section 6. 4. Mr. Group, can you read this by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending the Land Development Code of the City of Oviedo, specifically, Land Development Code, Article 6, Section 6.4(c), definitions in Table 6.4 relating to the New Downtown Village Core District, the definition and permissible and permitted uses within those zoning districts, providing for a coffee shop with a drive-through facility with locational criteria within the New Downtown Village Core District and an associated location map, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and the correction of Scrivner's errors, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to amend the city's land development code, specifically Article 6, Section 6.4(c) and Section 6.4(f)(3). These proposed amendments accomplish three things. The first thing is that it creates a definition for a coffee shop with a drive-through. The basic, the definition is such. A coffee shop with drive-through is a particular type of restaurant, subject to locational requirements, that sells coffee, drinks, sandwiches, and small plates, and may serve beer and wine by the glass on the premises, but not in the drive-through. The amendments also amend the table of permissible uses for the downtown village core, New Downtown Village Core Zoning District. It adds a coffee shop with drive-through facility to the permissible uses list. It also has a footnote there that has locational requirements for it. It also amends the prohibition of drive-through and drive-in facilities to state that drive-through or drive-in facilities for any use are prohibited, except if specifically allowed in the permissible column. Now, the locational requirements basically tie the location of this coffee shop to the northeast corner of the intersection of Mitchell Hammock Road and City Plaza Way. And the locational requirements are such that the facility will only be allowed 96.38 feet east of City Plaza Way and within 203.64 feet north of Mitchell Hammock Road. And the last thing that the amendments do is that it creates Exhibit D. So you only have a description within the permissible uses table that describes where the locational requirements are, but you also have Exhibit D, which graphically depicts the locational requirements for the proposed coffee shop. The Development Review Committee and the Planning, Zoning, Appeals Board both reviewed the proposed amendments. The Planning, Zoning, Appeals Board conducted a public hearing. Both recommended approval with certain changes. Both changes have been incorporated into the ordinance that is before you tonight. The staff concurs with the DRC and the PZA changes. It is recommended that council conduct a public hearing and schedule a second public hearing for Monday, September 21st, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Cobb, just for clarification, what are those two changes?
As far as the, the DRC added, I believe the original text only had, said it would serve wine by the glass, and so the DRC added beer and wine. And then the PZA, what they did, they, it was a minor change. I believe the original language said that the, it would be beer and wine served by the glass in the premises, and they changed the word "in" to the word "on." So those were the two changes that were recommended by the two committees.
All right, Scrivner stuff.
Scrivner stuff, yes, sir.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to council for or against 1625? I do not have any written request. Everybody wants their Starbucks, we know. All righty, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a second public hearing for ordinance number 1625 on September 21st, 2015, here at Oviedo City Hall, Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 p.m.
Second.
Motion, second, I think Harkin got that one. Sorry, Deputy Mayor.
That's all right.
Even from my deaf ear, I heard him first. All righty, Councilman Schenk, you have the floor.
Can I have one second? Yeah, I put the change up here, this, it really doesn't relate right now. They gave us the picture, so I thought for the future, when this comes forward. There was a change from a water feature to be removed, and it's now an art picture. Some art, I don't, it'll be better, I'm sure I understood, when it comes forth, giving us a fuller picture of it, but I just wanted you to see that, that it had changed, there was a water feature that was to be implemented. And the other two things, or it's really one thing, and I brought it up before, but we, you know, we pretty much beat on Parks and Rec pretty hard to make sure that the whole area stays up to a quality that we've called, you know, Disney, whatever, the highest quality that we've said. There's two areas that I keep pointing out that there's, I see as problematic, or how will the care be there? It is that open area that has, that's going to be, right as you enter, Oviedo Way, and outside, you know, have the two benches and the artwork. Now, that area, who's going to be taking care of that on an ongoing basis, make sure that it's clean, et cetera, et cetera? And then the two tables. There's these two off-site tables that sit out there that are not part of Starbucks' property, it was told to us, and the developer will take care of. And I just, you know, I go there, I live there. I see our, I'll give Parks and Rec credit, there are people there at nine o'clock at night, taking care of our park for us, cleaning it, making sure that as people still utilize the park at night, it's being cared for from early in the morning all the way through at night at night. That's the entranceway. So if there's stuff on the tables out there, who's going to be taking care of that? It's not blowing into the street, it's not going to be, things like that. And busing that area and the area in front of the cars, that's a main concern to mine, is as you're entering in, whose area is that? Mr. Cobb, whose area is that?
The simplistic answer is, if it's in the right-of-way, the city will be taking care of it. If it's on private property, then the property owner will be taking care of it. That's the simplistic answer. Some of the items that we will need to address during the development process will be those two tables and the benches, the artwork, those things that are associated with the development. We obviously will need to have discussions with the developer regarding those maintenance items. But the simplistic answer is, if it's in the right-of-way, it would be the city's responsibility. If it's not in the right-of-way, then it's the private property owners.
Because, just again, we're going to take the hit. We're going to be, nobody's going to know the difference between the right-of-way, the six-foot of the right-of-way that's in front, and the seven, eight-foot behind it that becomes the wall, or whatever the distances are. To the general public, they have no knowledge that, well, the city's taking care of and cutting the lawn and weeding, and those guys are out there like they are now, doing the job. But behind that, that's not our, you know, that's our, and how much, how do I say, code enforcement calls complaints that I don't want to ever hear. Again, as we push Drew and Parks and Rec very hard on that, to keep the quality up, I want to make sure that that is kept around to everybody that also has parts in that. I believe if Tom was here, I'd give him credit, that the apartments have always been kept very nice, you know, all the area that's so far developed has been beautifully maintained, et cetera. And I just want to make sure, again, that that's not an area that's left because it's not really Starbucks, not really ours, and not really the developers of the property current, that it just kind of falls in between the cracks and, and again, right there at the entranceway especially.
Anything else, Councilman?
Nope.
Councilman Harkin?
No, sir.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Deputy Mayor?
No. Good.
Well, Mr. Cobb, I will say that I agree with Councilman Schenk on the expectations of the upkeep. Now, you know, I know, I'll give Parks and Rec credit, I mean, they are learning the park as they go and keeping everything mowed and stuff, but, you know, I do agree that the weeding, the touches, the replacing of dead plants, the, there's starting to be a difference between our side and the apartment side. So I think that is something that you need to address as city manager with the Parks and Rec director, and get the folks out there and get the place all nice and tidied up. And there's, you know, the other night, we had the concert, there's weeds in the lawn, and, you know, that's very expensive grass, but again, let's, we're here to talk about Starbucks, not that, but I just wanted to piggyback on it while the door was open. As far as this goes, my, you know, I think it's great. I think everyone did a good job. Fountain picture, careless either way. If we put a fountain there, then we end up with a big pump somewhere, and we got that stupid boxes that we have all over the place down there, as it is with the other, the other ones, but probably a little easier to maintain, one less thing for us to take care of, but I think great job, great job. And there is a lot of buzz in the community on these two retailers you have here, so quicker the better. Now, come on up a second, got to ask you a question, just because it's the same question the five of us get all the time. Assuming this passes tonight, assuming it passes on second reading, what is your timeline for construction?
When can I come in with my phone?
Yeah, yeah. When's he going to go get his first cup of coffee?
Um...
In your mind, honestly?
We put the project out to bid.
Mm-hmm.
So we're, our plan is to start construction, we're going to get site plan approval, we're going to be in for our building, we would be in for our building permit right now if the city would review it. We have plans done.
Okay, so you're, you're ready to go?
Ready to go. Well, actually, is there any way that we can get the city to start reviewing our building permits?
You'd have to go ask Mr. Cobb that question. And I'm sure Mr. Group will come up with some reason why he can't, unless we ask him to come up with some reason why he can.
So we're, we're ready to rock and roll. Soon as we get site plan approval, moving for building permits, closing, and starting construction.
Great, that's good to hear.
My pleasure.
So spring of next year, is that what you're?
I'm thinking it's probably anywhere from a four to seven-month construction process. We do have the road with Mike Roberto ways, some extraordinary things that are not your standard. Yeah, I think outside date would be, we're putting June in as completion and delivery, but I think that's outside, outside.
Okay, good.
Great.
Thank you, David.
My pleasure, thank you.
Excuse me, David, I'm sorry, does anybody else have any other questions, David? No, thank you.
We look forward to it, and we really do appreciate all the cooperation with the city, and we've enjoyed this process so far, and looking forward to, we have pride in our developments as well, so.
You'd appreciate more if they review the project.
Well, yeah. Anything you can do to get our building permit reviewed, we would love it. Thanks.
Thank you, David. All right, is there any other questions from council? Motion on the table is just scheduled second public hearing for September 21st, 2015, 6:30 p.m., here in Council Chambers. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. See you in two weeks, David. All righty, next up, item number 11, which is ordinance number 1629. Mr. Group, can you read that by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the City of Oviedo, Florida, enacting a statutory development agreement relating to property owned by Venice Health System/Sunbelt, Inc., and Oviedo Fund, LLC, as the owner of a sign easement, which property is described as Lot 1, Oviedo Crossing, Phase 2A, as recorded in Plat Book 52, pages 15 and 16, Public Records of Seminole County, lest that part convey in Official Records Book 3501, page 1466, Public Records of Seminole County, and more particularly pertain to that property, subject to a sign easement agreement, recorded at Official Records Book 8403, page 1774, of the Public Records of Seminole County. The development agreement being approved in accordance with the provisions of the Florida Local Government Development Agreement Act, as set forth at sections 163.3220 to 163.3243 Florida statutes, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for non-codification and implementation, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to approve a statutory development agreement pertaining to the installation of off-site signage on property located at the northeast intersection of Devera Drive and Red Bull Lake Road. The agreement addresses the existing off-site signage, regulates it with new standards that are compatible with signs that are located in unincorporated Seminole County, along Red Bug Lake Road, and assigns a public purpose and benefit to the city by designating a three-foot by 32-foot panel for city use. Per the agreement, the proposed sign will have a maximum sign area of 320 square feet with a maximum height of 15 feet. In addition to the sign area, the city will have 96 square feet on top of the sign to place its emblem and slogan. The setback from Devera Drive will be 10 feet, the setback from Red Bug Lake Road will be 15 feet. The city attorney has reviewed this, the development agreement, has no objections. The local planning agency conducted a public, considered the ordinance on August 25th, 2015, and thereat recommended adoption. It is recommended that city council conduct a public hearing and schedule a second public hearing for Monday, September 21st, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Applicant here? Any comments? My favorite kind of comment.
Joe Thacker with Broad and Castle, 390 North Orange Avenue, Orlando. We agree with everything staff has presented, and we appreciate very much all the work that they went and, and put in to get this accomplished.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody here to speak on this issue? Mall sign's pretty, it says "Welcome to Oviedo" now. But it doesn't blink, and it's not neon, I'm sorry. All righty. Seeing nobody from the public wanting to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll move on to entertaining a motion to schedule ordinance number 1629 for a second hearing on September 21st, 2015, here at Oviedo City Hall, Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 p.m.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Schenk, anything? Deputy Mayor?
No.
Councilman Britton? Nope. Councilman Harkin? Hearing, no other comments? The motion on the table is scheduled the second public hearing for September 21st. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You're welcome. We should have just really picked it apart and screwed around with Brian a little bit.
Does that Brian have a little?
Without Brian, yeah. That would have been great. I'd like to send him that next.
He's been twitching for a while.
Hey, listen, Brian, you know, we got a problem with this thing.
I think PZA took care of that for you, in talking to Mr. Levy.
Yeah, but it just would have been. All righty, moving along, where are we up to here? We are up to item number 14, which is appointment to the firefighter pension board. It's the request, city council appoint one person. Mr. Cobb, you want to enlighten us real quick?
Yes, Mary. The, this is a request for council to appoint one member as a city council appointed position to the Firefighters Pension Trust Fund Board of Trustees. The board consists of five trustees, two of whom shall be legal residents of the city who are appointed by the council, two of whom who are members of the plan, who are elected by the majority of the firefighters, who are members of the plan, and a fifth trustee who is chosen by a majority of the other four trustees. Each trustee serves a two-year term. One of the city council appointed trustee positions expires this month, and so there are three candidates for your consideration.
Mr. Cobb, who holds that position now?
I believe it's currently held by Joshua Maddox.
And he put an application in?
Yes, sir.
I know he is. All righty. What is the pleasure of council?
Mayor?
Any nominations? Yes.
I'd like to nominate Josh Maddox.
Any other nominations?
Are, are there any of the other two applicants here? I'm sorry, what's your name?
Hi, Christina Silverman York.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, make a nomination for Ms. York.
Any other nominations?
Nope.
Hearing none, I will close nominations, and I will call them in order in which they were presented. All in favor of Joshua Maddox continuing on, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four. Ms. York?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Wake up!
No, I talked to her, I was just, pardon me.
Four to one, Joshua, you keep your seat for now. But, you know, don't look over your shoulder, because she's ready. All righty, well, thank you for your interest, Ms. York. We do appreciate it, we do have other boards, so keep your interest firm in with the clerk, and that way you'll be notified when positions open up on the different boards. Oh, our pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, moving along, we're up to first readings, we have none, resolutions, we have none, discussion items, none, we're done with that one, firefighters. So we're up to city managers' report. Mr. Cobb?
I have no report, Mayor.
I apologize, I'm just getting used to the new way of doing the agenda I have here in front of me, so. in front of me, so it's like having a book again, Brian.
I have no report, Mayor.
Oh, gosh, do we love you. Mr. City Attorney?
It's football season, I'm very quiet.
And I am going to ditto everyone, except I am going to say it was a great concert out at Oviedo on the Park last Thursday evening. Natasha and Jason put on one heck of a show, and it's a shame that there were so many things going on in the city that evening, and more people than come out to enjoy it because it was something. On the 19th, they have Rico Monaco is going to be down at Oviedo on the Park, that's at 6:00 PM. And now, I know it's Saturday, I know there's a lot of things going on, but if you were there on opening day when he and Emily Coop, I think you...
Cobb.
Both played, they were both exceptional as well, so I would encourage everybody to try to come out to that. Tomorrow, I go represent the city for Leadership Seminole Government Day. It's the mayor's panel tomorrow. Are you going to be there? You're always there.
I'll be there for discussion.
So it'll be a lot of fun, they try to separate Charles, Mayor Lacy, Mayor Triplet, and me as much as they can, and then Bev Weinberger gets all annoyed at us, but that's okay. We have a great time, and I think the class enjoys it. End of my report. Councilman Schenck, anything?
I echo the comments, I think the people that came to the concert last week were thrilled, and both performers were outstanding and generous, and gave great feedback about the venue and everybody who helped out. So thank you to Drew, staff, all those people that helped out, it really was a fantastic night.
And Councilman Hankin, too.
And Councilman.
Who announced both of them? You did such a good, on the first opening announcement, they said, "You're coming back and announce Josh, too," so.
Yeah, I mean, that was, it's my turn. Yeah, I mean, that concert, I mean, just sitting there and seeing this work all done, you know, from the staff that, you know, got this all built, and Tom and everybody that did it, to just be sitting here and seeing this Grammy winner, for lack of a better word, just blow it out the box. I mean, he was that good. I mean, I've seen him before, obviously, I know Natasha, she's great, but I mean, I think they surprised a lot of people, but, I mean, and I got to give some props to Drew. You know, Drew ran around very hard for two weeks and held a lot of stuff together. You know, he was glue for that, but I can tell you that both of them, Jason and Natasha, thought that Oviedo was just like a great place, they both want to come back, so I'm sure we'll have them back, and maybe we'll do it when it's a little cooler and there's no UCF game that night, and pack the place. But still work on Journey, you know, that would be nice, and, you know, it was really good, so, but it's nice to see our park come alive. But if you're around Saturday, even if you don't know...
19th, 19th.
19th, yeah, 19th. Come and watch it, it's really cool, so.
Very good. That's all I have. Deputy Mayor?
On Wednesday, Mr. Cobb and I went up to Sanford and spoke in front of the legislative delegation.
And thank you so much for covering that.
You're welcome.
I was able to get my AC fixed and get upstairs cold.
Well, I'm good. It wasn't nearly as crowded or busy as it has been in the past, but I did thank them for the $400,000 grant that they helped us secure, and to tell them about our project, Phase 1, Phase 2, and how we need money. We need to get people through Oviedo, into and through Oviedo. I attended a chamber meeting.
I just want to compliment you. Mr. Cobb and I met the day after you did that, and he said you did an exceptional job.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Cobb. That was nice. You know, it's hard because I go on, I was on, and then two people after me was Dr. Ann McGee, and she's an expert at speaking. She's just fantastic, so.
Just wrap you around her finger.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I went to a Chamber of Commerce meeting, and they are gearing up for their Arttoberfest. Yes, in Winter Springs, and they are looking for board members, they're taking application for board members. On November 6th, the Rotary, Oviedo Rotary is going to have their movie blockbuster, and this year it's going to be James Bond.
Well, you know we're all in for a sponsorship again, I'd say.
Oh, good.
That's November 6th.
Thank you. And then, in October, Tri-County is having their meeting here at our cultural center. So I'm not sure if we can all attend or drop in at this meeting, at our cultural center.
Tri-County?
Mm-hmm. Tri-County's having their meeting there.
What day is that?
I don't remember the date.
It's 15th.
November?
October.
October.
October 15th.
They're in the afternoon usually, right?
It's lunchtime.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly.
If I can, if I got enough notice, maybe I can get there.
So it'd be nice if we were, some of us were there, just to kind of welcome everybody.
And movie night's November 6th.
November 6th, yes.
That's always a fun night.
Yeah, they're going to have a martini bar.
Have to keep Debbie away.
Hanky, my God! We may get the other Hank in there.
Yeah, we know what, let's invite Gina. Tell her about the martini bar.
She's out of town for a while.
Well, it is James Bond, you know, the movie, so. And that's it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and believe it or not, it says "Dupity Mayor" here, Keith Brickwell, so there's a Scrivner's error, but that's okay. Keith, you're up.
Quick, couple of quick items. One, thank you very much to the staff, Brian, the clerk's office, Barbara, did a great job with the council meeting last week, and I understand that The Vine's donated the food, so if you get out to The Vine's, thank Mike for the donation. Everyone gave us a lot of compliments on our facility and really enjoyed Lars's presentation, so thanks everyone for doing that. As the mayor said, I'll be at Leadership Seminole tomorrow for a discussion panel in the morning, and then later in the morning, I'm going to be out at Seminole State and meet with the director of their construction management program, and get some ideas that they have on moving that program over to the Oviedo campus, so that they can be closer to UCF's program, so I'll report back on their plans for that.
Interesting.
That's all I got.
Excellent. Alrighty, future meeting dates are Monday, September 21st, we're back to Mondays, at 6:30 PM, we'll have the budget regular session. Thursday, September 24th, at 6:30 PM, we have the LDC work session. No cheers from everyone? Monday, October 5th, 6:30 PM, regular session. Monday, October 19th, 6:30 PM, regular session. Any other business before us?
I think I've got to get my hair done that day.
I have to get my nails done that day.
Yeah, Thursday nights because of you. You'll be there. Anything else for us, Mr. Cobb?
No, sir.
Alrighty, hearing none, meeting is adjourned.